Okay, so tonight Assistant Superintendent Erin Townsend will present the revisions to Policy ACA, which is our student harassment, sexual harassment and discrimination policy. You will also review the accompanying procedures and discuss our implementation plan. I would like to remind the Board that it's almost a year to the day that we engaged in this process. Last year around this time, we brought a revision of this policy to conform to new state and federal requirements. And at that time, a group of students, former students and advocates for equity, transparency and victims' rights stood before you and asked that you engage in a deeper look at these policies. A year later, here we are, engaging in a substantive policy review process that engaged many of those advocates, school staff and outside partner organizations. I would like to thank and recognize Assistant Superintendent Townsend, who has skillfully guided this process. This, I believe, is a model of exemplary policy work, and I'm proud of the outcome and believe that you will be as well. As part of the presentation, we will also be talking about the implementation plan. And I'm singling that out because, as you will see, in order for us to implement this exemplary policy, we'll take a significant amount of work and resources. So it will be important, as we advance into our budget this spring, for you to remember the commitments that we're making through this process as we make those needed resources visible and prioritize them in the FY22 budget. There have been many people involved in this process, including the Board's Policy Committee chaired by Member Figdor. And in a couple moments, I'll ask Mr. Townsend and Ms. Figdor to thank the many other partners that have been a part of the policy work. But before we begin the workshop, I would like to address the Board and the community on how we've been dealing with the social media allegations about instances of harassment, sexual harassment and discrimination in our schools because it intersects very directly with this policy. And Board Member Burke raised this issue during earlier comments and questions around the school reopening. So I do want to address that as part of my comments today. So as the Board knows, back at the end of the school year, we had over 50 students, so current and past students lodge anonymous allegations against more than 40 past and present Portland Public School staff members. The allegations included references that ranged from instances where students were sexually harassed, they were discriminated against because of their gender, their gender identification or race, or belittled and were made to feel uncomfortable in our schools. The allegations involved mostly high school students and staff at all three of our high schools. Since that time, we've been conducting a thorough investigation of all of those allegations. In all, the claims amount to more than 100 pages of text messages and social media posts. As I said, more than 40 past and present staff were mentioned. So this has not been a small undertaking. First, we made an effort to reach out through a known former student to any of the parties that had contributed posts. We made multiple efforts to do this and implemented a set of safe reporting procedures that are similar to the ones that you will hear about in our presentation tonight. This yielded some additional information and led to several in-depth interviews with those parties. Internally, we had to identify the specific staff involved. And let me be clear that we assume that all of our staff are innocent and afforded all of them all of the due process that is customary and appropriate in these situations. Our HR and legal staff, working under my supervision, identified a number of allegations where there was substantive evidence, either by independent corroboration and/or many similar instances, and treated those as personnel investigations. Over the course of the summer, interviews with all of these individuals were conducted and recommendations were made for follow-up. That work is ongoing. The remaining allegations were ruled out from disciplinary potential because they did not rise to the standard that I just articulated. However, we deemed all of those allegations as worthy of follow-up. I personally have met with all of those individuals, all of the individuals in that pool, and we are in the process of following up and closing out those matters in an appropriate fashion. As the Board has been made aware of in my periodic updates on this topic, we are developing a full report on these allegations and the investigation. That report will be shared in an executive session with the Board before the end of this month. A redacted version of that report will be made public once the Board has reviewed the full report. I would like to reflect on some of the lessons from those allegations and how they impact how we move forward as a district. First, as noted, we understand that we need to have multiple safe reporting avenues for students and others who experience any of these issues in our schools. Anonymous posts on a Saturday afternoon may feel good, but they don't allow us to fully resolve these issues. So the steps that we took this summer and the ones that are reflected in this policy that you'll be hearing about today, to allow for safe reporting are critical to allowing us to understand our students' experiences and make them everything that we want them to be. Second, the allegations are confirmation that as a school system, we need to do better to address issues when they are raised. A good number of those allegations noted that these issues were brought to the attention of staff at different times. And clearly, they were not closed out for those who made the report. This matches, this matches up with experiences that brought us to the policy changes that we're discussing tonight. And it matches up with my lived experience, having had to enter some of our investigations after they started. So the policy changes are important to the extent that they emphasize having the necessary resources to intake, triage and monitor complaints of harassment, sexual harassment and discrimination, and bringing them to a full conclusion that is known to all parties. We've used this knowledge to inform how we're dealing with the social media allegations. From the beginning, I've said that the extent to which a year or two from now, someone says, what happens to all those allegations about misogyny and discrimination in our high schools? I want to be able to point to a final document that outlines exactly what happened. That is the purpose of the report. It's also why we're taking some time because, why it's taken some time because, to me, a full and exhaustive review of the claims and appropriate follow-through on all aspects of the claim requires time, energy and detail. And this is happening at a time that we have significant other issues that are taking up our time and bandwidth. Finally, and I stress this in all my conversations with my colleagues, is that this set of allegations reminds us of our sacred responsibility as educators. Throughout my career, I've always been humbled by the fact that our interactions with students, sometimes interactions that we may only vaguely remember, are held up as defining moment that forged a path for a student that made them into the successful adult that they are today. We love these stories and they take, and we take huge pride in them. These allegations are the other side of that same coin. I was heartbroken to read these allegations, some of which were by students who had graduated from high school last year, some from students that are still in high school, but some from students that graduated as far back as 2012. These graduates are young adults. They are sufficiently marked, affected, maybe even traumatized by these experiences, that they recall them with vivid detail and palpable pain almost a decade later. This is something that reminds me and reminds all of my colleagues that every interaction with a student matters. What may be an offhand comment, a sarcastic retort or comedic attempt, or a momentary lapse in judgment brought on by anger or frustration may be forgotten by us, but may be a defining moment in the life of our students. Teaching is a profession, and there's no checklist for what to do in every instance. Professional judgment is required at all times, and I have stressed that in every one of my interactions with my colleagues around these issues. I've been amazed at the reflections and takeaways that individuals that I've discussed these allegations with have shared. Those conversations have given me solace and reassurance that we have incredibly thoughtful professional and deeply human teachers and staff working in the Portland Public Schools. So this conversation today is very significant because policy is how the Board sets expectations and direction. So I'm looking forward to our discussion tonight and to getting this policy revised. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to lead us through the workshop.
Great. Thank you, Javier. And thank you for framing the importance of this work. You know, it's, you know, was not lost on us. And when we started this work and, you know, the events of the past six months have only further, you know, served to heighten the importance of the work and kind of the urgency of what we've taken on. So before we jump in formally to the presentation, I want to also just kind of acknowledge and will speak of the community partners who've been integral to this work. But I'm pleased that we've had a few folks hang with us tonight and to stick with us and join us in the workshop tonight. So appreciate Christa Voe, who's a parent leader and supported us with the policy work over the summer for being here with us tonight. Kimberly Simmons, who's with USM Gender and Women's Studies Department, that's been a part of the Coalition from the inception and has been integral to our support. Sasha from Student Speak Up, who is a student leader and has helped to kind of present compelling, you know, kind of stories and data about the student experience that's helped to drive this work forward over time. And then Clara Porter from Prevention Action Change, who as well has been a member of the Coalition throughout and an active participant in our work together. So these are four of a number of folks who have been instrumental in helping build my understanding of this work and help to bring this policy to the place that it is right now. So I want to appreciate you all for being here. Kim's going to help me from in a moment do some framing around, you know, kind of the launch of this work and the establishment of the Coalition. I also just want to appreciate before we get started, the Board leadership and engagement in this work. So from the members of the Policy Committee, who, you know, kind of charged the Subcommittee to start and work and certainly have been actively involved throughout. So Chair of the Committee, Ms. Figdor, Mr. Atkinson, Ms. Morioni, you know, have been engaged throughout. So appreciate that. And then additional Board members have appreciated that they've taken time to engage during this process pre-pandemic and in some of our virtual meetings. So including the Chair, you know, Board Member Burke, and let's see, make sure I'm not forgetting anybody, Ms. Youngala, who has been really ablely helping to kind of frame the PAE perspective and multilingual perspective in our work. So that's contributed to what we have in front of us here tonight. So and as I kind of bring up the PowerPoint that'll take us through this, you know, I want to name, you know, in the context of the challenges that we are trying to address to create safe and equitable learning environments for all of our students. See, this policy work as work that's complementary to a number of the other efforts that have kind of been named tonight around creating those kinds of environments. The policy work complements our, you know, overall school culture and climate work, the PBIS work that's been underway, the equity work that's been underway, and even the instructional work that's underway from our math work is integral to creating safe and, you know, equitable learning environments for our students, to the Africana Studies work. So those are all aspects of prevention, I would, you know, we would argue in terms of kind of creating the kinds of climates for students. And so this policy work really serves to try and, you know, deepen that work and provide some method of recourse when things happen in our schools that are contrary to our beliefs and our purported mission about creating this kind of climate for all of our students. So I'll bring up the PowerPoint here real quick. So the goals of the workshop tonight are just to give a little bit of context and history for this work. And I'll ask him to speak to that in just a moment. Then to provide an overview of the revised policy and procedures, you know, as you, if you have taken a look, you can see they are substantive and we'll kind of speak to some of that. And then, as the Superintendent mentioned, share some of our initial thinking about implementation planning for right now, as well as, as well as kind of some of the resource implications as we move forward to support the ongoing implementation of this policy and this overall work. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kim for a moment. And Kim, let me make sure you're unmuted to speak a little bit about kind of the context and the history that brought the group forward to our Board meeting last October, that helped to initiate kind of this collaboration directly with the school district.
Thank you. So I am Kim Simmons, and I work at the University of Southern Maine, although not this semester, and have been involved in prevention work and Title IX advocacy and activism as a faculty member there, working with students and really concerned about the prevalence of sexual harassment and assault that students reported. And often they would share their experiences in middle and high school and how that shaped their education and their, how they were feeling coming into college. And so we know from the research and then from all this personal testimony, that it is a very big problem for young people. At around the time that Betsy DeVos was proposing changes to Title IX, I met Sasha, who wrote a capstone project on the experiences of students with sexual harassment and other kinds of discrimination and harassment in the Portland schools and Dearing High School in particular. And so we became connected and thinking about how we could help create more prevention and a safer climate, and then connected with some of the other advocacy organizations. So groups like Main Boys to Men, Sexual Assault, the SARSm, Prevention Action Change, Through These Doors, and Speak About It, that does consent education work. I'm tired. I'm sure I'm forgetting some. We have a slide, but really came together to try to brainstorm, what is it that is going to do the most to create more safety in the schools. At the same time, we were concerned about some of the proposed changes to Title IX, which you'll see, and trying to think about how we could object to the worst ones and be familiar with the policy. And so through all of those interactions, we came to you last year to say that we wanted to see a policy that would really put student safety at the center and help think about prevention, intervention and response in thoughtful ways and in ways that acknowledge the intersection that not that all students are going to be vulnerable to sexual and gender-based harassment, as well as some students experiencing intersecting identities that will make their experiences of discrimination or bias or harassment different, amplified, harder to talk about. And so we really wanted to have a very comprehensive way of thinking about that. And with that, we launched our Subcommittee and had about a year's worth of meetings and writing. And I think that hands it back to you, Erin.
Great. Thank you, Kim. And yeah, thanks for your leadership and that of, you know, Sasha and others, all of the folks on the call. So here you can see some of the kind of organizational membership and representation that has been at the table as we've been doing this work. And in addition to, you know, staff, you know, and the Board members, as I called out. So it really has been a collaborative effort. And as we'll talk about later, fortunate that a few of those organizations, you know, are in a position to have some grant funding to support some of the initial implementation of this work. And so that's a huge asset for us to move the work forward. And, you know, part of the question about the ongoing implementation and resources. So, and you know, Kim, after I say that, you know, share, you know, the initial goals, I think Kim spoke to here briefly in terms of the Coalition and reaching out to engage was to ensure that we ended up with a process that allowed for kind of clear notification of students' rights, you know, to be free from violence and harassment, you know, that we were, you know, declarative in our engagement and communication and messaging in our schools, that that was their right and that, you know, we were here to protect that right. That we want to focus, as named, like on the prevention and not just responding when things, after things have happened, but to try and do our best to eliminate, you know, these instances and to respond quickly and immediately when things, when things do happen. That we wanted to bring a trauma-informed lens to our process of handling complaints so that the experience of coming forward resulted in, you know, a supportive experience for, for students who may have experienced harm as opposed to one that further exacerbated the challenges that they may have experienced. So and that implicates significant training around how we manage this. And then, you know, that we are aware of and continuing to collaborate with community partners to provide for support for students who've experienced any of this harassment or discrimination and supporting them to be able to reengage with school. So these were, the goals kind of set out of the Coalition in a bit, that helped to frame the work as we entered into looking at the policy and how we could craft policy that supported this and kind of held us to this standard. And I would, you know, acknowledge that throughout that, we've talked about not just writing policy, but just the implementation work to actually translate policy to students' lived experience in the buildings and what kind of guidance and additional supports are needed to ensure that, you know, it moves from this forum into the day-to-day lives of students in our schools. So I'll begin with a bit of the overview of the policy and then the procedure. Again, just to clarify, you know, you had in front of you the approval of the policy is kind of the Board role, but we also wanted to highlight the procedural changes because they are significant. You know, as customary with some of our policy work, you know, you won't find kind of a redlined version here to see the updates because, you know, the changes are so significant and kind of profound that that was kind of a moot point. It really was a total rewrite of both the policy and the procedure. So briefly to speak a little bit to the broader policy that which, you know, you're teed up, you know, we had the first read today and we'll have the second read and vote at our next Board meeting, is, you know, the overarching policy, you know, kind of sets out to firm our mission, you know, to be able to have that all students, as we've set up, the right to attend school free from discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment, assault and misconduct based on membership in a protected category. And certainly the policy goes into detail about those, you know, as those are defined, you know, in kind of state and federal law. So and within that as well, I think, you know, going deeper, you know, we acknowledge some of the forces that kind of create the challenge, the historical and societal biases that shape our schools and how students experience them currently and how we are seeking to interrupt that. Again, kind of connecting back to the various strands of work that we're trying to do to address that. And these commitments to kind of the increased prevention efforts to ensure that, you know, our, our response to these things helps to resolve them kind of in the most direct and immediate fashion so that we can get students re-engaged and provide them the support. There are a couple of key definitions that the policy articulates that I want to kind of spend just a moment on. So obviously, key to this is kind of the framing and, you know, part of the role of the policy in defining these is discrimination. So I would just share, and you can, you know, see the details of the language, but, you know, the discrimination definition really speaks to some more of the kind of systemic impacts that may happen or students may experience based on their membership in a protected category. So examples that are called out in the policy include disparities in access to educational programs, including extracurriculars, honor societies and classes. So those are issues, you know, that we've surfaced and talked about and are kind of defined as elements of discrimination that a student might experience, or disparities in discipline. So certainly one that has come into focus for us over the past year, 18 months to be engaged with. So the discrimination definition really speaks at kind of that systemic level in terms of individual students' experience. The harassment definition speaks again to kind of an individual student's experience that may result from, you know, kind of a targeted, you know, targeted experience based on their, you know, actual or perceived membership in a protected category. So and it interferes with their ability to engage in school. So those kinds of examples are, you know, when somebody uses a racial epithet, you know, directed at somebody or uses some kind of slur, teasing or joking based on kind of perception of identity. So those kinds of things are some of the language that falls under examples of harassment. And certainly there's some crossover, you know, with our bullying policies and things like that that, you know, can be relevant here as well. The sexual harassment definition is a bit broader and a bit thornier, as kind of Kim referenced, you know, due to kind of the, some of the revisions to the Title IX rules. So one of the challenges that we were confronted with and trying to articulate this policy was kind of a higher standard that was set forward in the Title IX definition and threshold of what constitutes sexual harassment based on the federal rules. So the key kind of phrase within that, there are a few elements. So we tried to manage that, I'll say before I explain it, by identifying a policy and want to acknowledge the support of our, you know, kind of consultants and partners at Drummond-Woodson to help us figure out how to frame this, to kind of be consistent both with the goals and aspirations of the Subcommittee, but also to be, you know, compliant with kind of the, you know, federal and state law. So what we've tried to do is carve out, you know, a definition of what meets the Title IX standards. And that's the most narrow definition, kind of with the highest standard. More broadly, there's a definition spelled out in main law that is a bit broader in scope and is defined in the policy in terms of what constitutes sexual harassment. And then beyond that even, we felt it was important that there's, you know, examples of conduct that we would find inappropriate, offensive and, you know, had the potential to limit a student's ability to feel safe and welcome in a school community. And so we've articulated those and, you know, with lists of examples of those kinds of interactions to be within the scope of this policy as well. So we're trying, and you know, this will come up as we talk about the procedure, about how we then manage, you know, which set of procedures we use to manage depending on which definition of sexual harassment might apply. So in particular, that relates to, we'll speak to the Title IX pieces. So but just so that people have it in their minds, the kind of key elevation in the new federal Title IX regulations had to be with, you know, within their hostile environment definition determining that the conduct was severe, pervasive and objectively offensive. So it has to meet kind of all three of those criteria as opposed to historically, there was an or in lieu of the and. So it was severe, pervasive or objectively offensive. So the new Title IX rules have kind of elevated, and that's one of the challenges we've been managing and trying to craft, both the policy, but more importantly, the procedures in terms of how we respond when there are instances of conduct, you know, that we would deem inappropriate. So the policy as well goes on to describe generally our kind of complaint procedures. I'll get into that more specifically here as we go through the next set of slides and because that's certainly where it gets into more significant detail. And, you know, speaks to continued aspirations around how we manage our, you know, kind of confidentiality and reporting processes. So that's some of the substance of the overall policy. And now I want to spend a few minutes kind of talking through some of the procedures in terms of how it would align with kind of the aspirations of what we said of, you know, prioritizing prevention and intervention, trauma-informed intervention in particular, and the supports on the backend to ensure, you know, we accomplish those goals. And as the Superintendent framed in the beginning, that we have a process to be able to much more effectively respond when students come forward to us. And we have more effective avenues for them to come forward when there are instances of harassment, discrimination or sexual harassment in our schools. So the first framing and what you'll see in the procedure, so this now kind of just transitions us to a bit of an overview of the elements of the procedure. So the first is really prioritizing and kind of codifying in the procedure, some of these elements around prevention and notification. So in terms of prevention, you know, again, as I've stated, our goal is just to reduce the actual number of incidents that might become formal complaints. So as instead of just having a So as instead of just having a complaint procedure that just, you know, makes its way through, one of our goals in this rewrite is to be able to elevate these commitments to be able to, you know, have structures in place that intervene before they become formal complaints. So, you know, some of the things you'll see in the policy that are in service of these prevention goals are collaborating with some of our community partners, you know, as we've talked about and is kind of in process to be able to provide, develop and provide the training needed for all staff. And, you know, and there are a few levels of training, which I'll kind of call out as we move through, but that's really grounded in the best practices from bias prevention, sexual violence and kind of dating violence fields as well as others, you know, as other related groups. So we're fortunate to have a lot of that expertise within our subcommittee and folks, you know, that have, you know, some of these initial grants are helping to contribute to that effort. So the other, a couple of other elements is stronger consent education curriculum through health classes, support for student groups working on advocacy and change, so continuing to lift up the student voice and supporting to create these positive climates. And then establishing kind of expectations, and again, this is where, you know, it comes back to the kind of complimentary efforts of our PBIS and other work that, you know, creates expectations for immediate response and intervention, that we have a culture when those things happen as opposed to not looking the other way, people not taking them seriously, that, you know, collectively, both the student level and staff level are intervening, you know, when these smaller microaggressions happen before things grow in terms of impact and the kind of incidences. So this, you know, to deliver on these prevention elements, you know, it'll require, you know, significant additional training for all PPS staff in addition to folks who have some kind of particular roles here. We'll talk about, you know, the district Title IX coordinator, building-based liaisons as a role to facilitate reporting so that we're creating opportunities at the school level for students to be able to reach out and connect with, and other investigator roles, you know, for those who do have to manage and work their way through additional complaints. You know, updating the health curriculum and appreciations to, you know, Assistant Superintendent Nali and, you know, that this work has been teed up to work with our health, our health teachers. You know, there's recent legislation to incorporate this into our curriculum and so that is part of our implementation plan as we move forward. And then updates to our student handbook, our websites and all of those kinds of tools to be able to help clarify for students and families, you know, in plain accessible language, you know, what is appropriate, what's not appropriate, so that we have those clear expectations. Again, part of the fundamental premise of our PBIS work is you need to be clear about what the expectations are if we're going to, you know, help folks meet them. In addition to kind of overlapping with prevention and notification, they're kind of bundled in the procedure because we see them as kind of serving similar goals. So the notification language in the procedure speaks to, you know, ensuring that all students and families know that they deserve to feel and be safe in school and know how to access support and resources from our community partners, find a supportive adult to disclose to in their school. So, and then how to access Title IX processes if appropriate. And then similarly, notification really is directed to staff as well so that they know clearly their responsibilities as mandatory reporters and how to contact and reach the Title IX coordinator and are trained in how to respond to students when they come forward with complaints. This notification, as I said, you know, will require updates to our website, our student and faculty handbooks and communication with families through, you know, kind of annual communications with families as well as, you know, student collateral, you know, for our buildings that help to reinforce these messages and ensure that it's widely known who are those folks that they can reach out to, both in the community as well in their buildings as well as at the district level. And want to shout out, you know, the Student Speak Up website, one of the, you know, kind of products of Sasha's Capstone, that is a great entry point for us that we're building off of in, you know, our communications and notification work to be able to help be a resource for this, for this work for our students moving forward. So beyond this, now we move kind of into the complaint procedures more broadly and the first kind of step in these complaint procedures is the reporting when a student or, or staff member comes forward as witnessed something, you know, that they believe may constitute harassment, discrimination or sexual harassment. So, you know, language that you'll see in the procedure has us, you know, kind of committed to making sure reporting is easier and ensuring a rapid response, I think, you know, both in the context of, you know, the social media complaints and as well as Sasha's Capstone research, you know, it's evident that that is not clear to students of where to go and what to do with information if they feel like, you know, something inappropriate has happened and how to get support for that. So that's one of the overarching goals for this. So it's made clear, reports can be made to any staff member and staff members have a responsibility to communicate that to either their building liaison or the district Title IX coordinator immediately within the next 24 hours. Reports can be made directly to the, you know, district affirmative action officer or Title IX coordinator. And we'll be establishing these building level liaison roles so that there's somebody known, at least, and at least one person in our secondary schools, if not more, that are known to students to be able to, for them to reach out. You know, I think it's, you know, we recognize reaching out at a district level to somebody who they don't know or not familiar with, have no relationship with, is one of the barriers to reporting that has been true in our schools, you know, for the past number of years. Additionally, we want to establish, you know, the procedure calls on us to establish an anonymous reporting system so we can address situations where, you know, a party may feel unsafe in coming forward with that report. So we feel like, you know, these anonymous reports do have benefit for us in terms of having just another vehicle for, for us to collect data on student experience and provide safe ways for students to report that so that we can identify patterns and, you know, of activity across school, you know, across the school over time. But we're recognizing part of, we'll talk about in terms of intake is, you know, anonymous complaints often can, it can be challenging to use those as basis for investigations unless they're, you know, ultimately brought forward as formal complaints. But we feel like it has value and want that to be another option within, you know, kind of the scope of options for students to be able to report. You know, I'd say one of the core values I think that we've talked through and folks feel free to, you know, chime in for me here, but is helping to kind of center and ensure that, you know, any student kind of coming forward can retain as much control over the process as, you know, as is appropriate and feasible, you know, given, you know, mandatory reporting requirements and things like that, but that we're doing, part of the work we want to do in terms of intake is ensuring students know what the process looks like and that there's clear information presented to them so that they can maintain control over that process and not let it get away from them because that can often be part of the, you know, history of kind of re-traumatizing of the events when, you know, when they've lost control of the process. So from reports, we moved to kind of intake and so there's a lot of focus on this and it'd be a focus of our training that, you know, you know, kind of the overall priorities as it says is clearly, you know, everybody who's coming forward first and foremost wants the behavior to stop. I mean, that's the goal and so that's what we're trying to address, right? So the, you know, everything, you know, when somebody comes forward, you know, the first step is to ensure that safety is established for the student and that that's kind of the first priority that they are safe and we're creating kind of a safe condition. You know, the other kind of overarching belief, right, is coming at this with an understanding that reporting parties want to know that they'll be supported and believed, that they're not greeted with skepticism about their complaints. And, you know, that's going to take training on our part for staff to be, you know, to how to respond when students come forward, to be able to present in that way and to not, you know, as the superintendent indicated, you know, have the experience that a number of our students had where they did come forward to report things and kind of didn't go anywhere, didn't, nothing really happened. And, you know, that's one of the, you know, training elements that we feel like is important to ensure, you know, that students will come forward and report these issues. So, and then, you know, just lastly, that we'll, you know, continue to work to be trauma-sensitive within that and protecting privacy, as I was just saying, kind of providing clear information and choices for those reporting parties so that they can retain control over the disclosure of the information and how that gets handled moving forward. So a little bit of process related to that, you know, that the expectation of within 24 hours of receiving a report, you know, because there's an important element of timeliness with this, employees must form their building level liaison and/or the district Title IX coordinator about the report. And that then the liaison or Title IX coordinator will schedule an intake meeting with the reporting party to provide information, you know, to help kind of deepen their understanding of what their choices are and to support them in accessing any community resources given their, given the situation. In terms of the, you know, from that intake, as we've kind of built students' understanding if they're moving forward with a complaint, that, you know, we, you know, there are a number of steps in terms of notifying folks around their rights and the support services available to them, both of the accusing parties and the alleged victims as well as the folks who are accused or the alleged perpetrators. You know, establishing those interim measures to make sure safety is in place for everybody. And then, you know, the reiteration of the importance of maintaining privacy and confidentiality and that retaliation for folks making a complaint, you know, and not be tolerated in any way, shape or form. So, and it's at this moment that, you know, many situations can be addressed through an informal resolution. So you'll see in the investigation procedures, the opportunity to address, you know, complaints that come forward through an informal resolution. So, you know, that being said, if folks are not in agreement or, you know, kind of decline to enter into that, then we move forward with the investigation process into a more formal complaint. And, you know, I'll mention this again, when we get to the kind of Title IX carve-outs, you know, we, one of the most basic elements of the Title IX complaint process is there does need to be a formal written complaint for it to be treated as a, as a Title IX complaint. Otherwise, you know, it is kind of dismissed. Our broader policy that addresses discrimination, harassment and kind of the two outer rings of that sexual harassment definition allow us to manage the complaint process without a formal written complaint, the report and the details provided through that allow us to kind of initiate investigation based on that substance. A couple of other steps, just, you know, that the district Title IX coordinator really provides an important consultative role in supporting the investigation to ensure, you know, it's done kind of to the goals and aspirations that we've articulated here and, you know, that these trauma-informed practices are followed. You know, depending on the nature of the allegations, you know, it's important to coordinate with the Children's Advocacy Center to ensure that the kind of investigation and interviews of anybody engaged, you know, are coordinated so as to not kind of re-traumatize folks and be asking alleged victims to be in the space of having to retell their stories multiple times to multiple parties. And again, continuing this kind of communication and education element for students to be informed with clarity about the process as they continue to move through and support services continue to be made available to them. Ultimately, you know, the investigation leads to kind of the findings and appeals. So, you know, the, the procedure lays out that all parties will be informed of the findings in writing, an informed appeal process within 40 days of filing a complaint. Again, you know, continuing to provide support services throughout. And, you know, we may, you know, recommend a variety of responses depending on the situation, ranging from kind of educational interventions to more traditional disciplinary interventions as appropriate. You know, we're in alignment with kind of our emerging philosophies around discipline. You know, we see value in kind of restorative structures to be able to mitigate the harms that may have been caused. But again, you know, that requires kind of consent from all parties to engage in that process. And ultimately, in this broader, you know, kind of complaint procedure, the superintendent is the kind of the final decision maker and the hear of appeals. And, you know, we, you know, make commitments in the procedure to be mindful in the application of, you know, any kind of findings and outcomes from the process of equity in our disciplinary measures, so being aware of those elements. Now to just kind of speak to a few of the kind of important callouts and, you know, ask folks on our team to, you know, share if I'm missing anything, but a couple of the important, because then, you know, the procedure has the overall complaint procedure and then, as you'll see, has some specifics around how we have to manage Title IX procedures. And these are really driven by the revised federal Title IX rules. So as I mentioned earlier, a formal written complaint must be filed to pursue an investigation. So that's a requirement. So just a report or a verbal report or disclosure does, you know, does not elevate to the level of a Title IX complaint. In, in the Title IX regulations and one of the concerns, you know, from the field and, you know, is that, you know, that there is an increased emphasis on the rights of the accused in the, in the new regulations. And so they have language around how interim measures may not favor either party. So in our broader complaint procedure, you know, those interim measures may, they are not in all, you know, contexts, but may favor the, the reporting party. So for example, if class, if two students are in the same class, right, you know, and a student comes forward, an example of that is, you know, that the alleged perpetrator's class may be moved or changed for a period of time. That might be an example of favoring the student, the alleged victim in that case. So that's not allowed, you know, in terms of these interim measures from Title IX. So there are a number of kind of specific elements and this is part of why the procedures are so dense at this point of how all parties, both parties, the alleged accuser and the alleged perpetrator have the opportunity to provide written responses to the investigation report, have the ability to submit questions for kind of cross-examination to the other parties that are engaged in it, may suggest witnesses and so forth. So there is a lot of kind of back and forth in the process that is required by these new federal Title IX investigations. Additionally, the federal Title IX legislation calls out some kind of distinctive roles that is different than our policies and the prior rules and kind of our, you know, general complaint handling. So they articulate, you know, the role of an investigator as somebody who, you know, is trained in leading the investigation. They, that is not the Title IX coordinator. The Title IX coordinator is, has a consultive role in that, so it is a distinct separate person. They then turn over that investigation report to a separate person deemed in the language as a decision maker, who is the one who then reviews the investigation report, may engage in some of this kind of cross-examination or further information from both parties to make a determination and determine the appropriate remedies or kind of outcomes. So, and then ultimately, the other kind of role is then for the appeals and we've positioned that to be the superintendent, again, you know, consistent with our prior policy and kind of our other complaint procedure. So, and there's a very short timeline, you know, in those federal Title IX regulations that the appeal must be requested within five days of receiving the determination. So, you know, that's part of the complexity that we're trying to manage both in the articulation of the procedure because there are some requirements here that are, you know, relatively onerous in terms of managing a complaint when it gets to the Title IX, when it meets those criteria and, you know, and providing avenues and opportunities for us to respond more, more effectively when it doesn't reach that level. So thus, you know, the procedure is pretty dense and lays out kind of the two versions of the process. Getting to the end here almost, just kind of the last sections or that I wanted to highlight for this is just commitments that we're making in the procedure around regular, you know, kind of record-keeping and reporting on the data as it relates to allegations of harassment and discrimination. So, you know, the language in the procedure commits us to an annual report to the board regarding school safety, including information about harassment and discrimination reports and complaints and administering school climate surveys to inform the ongoing efforts to provide a safe and equitable learning environment. So we certainly have some efforts, you know, in terms of our student surveys underway, but this may help to inform how we continue to utilize those tools as we, you know, seek to accomplish the goals of this policy procedure. So that's a bit of the overview of the policy and procedure. I have just a couple of last slides before I can pause and invite any of the other members to fill in anything I'm missing. But just this is kind of a brief snapshot of our initial implementation plan around the policy rollout. You know, we've been consulting with our Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion, Barrett Wilkinson, about the experiences and the rollout of the transgender and gender-expansive policy to model some of our rollout on that work. So we're going to have four chunks of the implementation. One is, you know, developing the training and executing on that, so that is kind of the first row here, to develop those training materials, identifying the kind of key staff roles, and launching those trainings for this year and kind of setting things up to be integrated into our plans moving forward, right, and new, new employee orientation, other of those kinds of regular routines where that'll be important touchpoints. So we're working with a couple of organizations now, so SARSAM through These Doors and Maine Behavioral Health, unfortunately have a grant in partnership with PPS to provide some student advocates or youth advocates at our high schools and to provide training support. So we're collaborating with them, so you see them listed here as part of the resource to accomplish that element of the training. Additionally, Maine Boys Demand has a grant from the Office, from the Department of Justice and the Office of Violence Against Women to do training in this area as well. So they're a partner at the table in the development of this work. The next, you know, aspect of the implementation plan is around the notifications work and the, so there, as I mentioned earlier, updating our websites and handbooks, you know, collaborating with Student Speak Up and leveraging the work that's already happened there to link that into our web presence to be able to have ready, information readily available for students, producing kind of collateral for schools. So again, you know, with the aspiration of being back in school more and more frequently on that, you know, students, there's, you know, information around school posters, handouts, postcards, you know, that help to communicate how students can access resources. And then envisioning hosting a Parent U event in the, you know, in the early 2021 to help communicate to families about this policy and the rollout of this policy and those expectations. So Grace is our lead from the communications team, partnering again with, you know, our youth advocates through the grant of SARSAM and through These Doors, as well as Student Speak Up and our school leaders to be able to kind of get this work out and update the handbooks, you know, with this updated language. Other prevention aspects that are kind of called out in our implementation plan that I mentioned was, you know, kind of determining our consent curriculum. So as I mentioned, you know, with Malia's leadership, working with the health team to be able to, you know, develop that moving forward, and then the engagement with our student leadership groups at the school. So the GSA is the Black Student Union's, other groups, and supporting them to be able to help kind of advocate and support the culture change at schools that we want to see happen. Then lastly is kind of the, the last row here is about kind of our reporting work. So establishing this anonymous reporting tool, finalizing our data collection processes, you know, preparing our end-of-the-year reports. I'll be collaborating with our Director of Data, Jamie Kearney, on rolling these pieces out, you know, over the next few months. So some of the resource implications for us to kind of be aware of about, you know, given the work even just implied, you know, in that implementation plan, you know, we are fortunate to have the partnership from a number of our community partners. And, you know, I think considerations for us moving forward is doing this annual, some of these annual required trainings, kind of the in-depth, so to be able to have staff be able to respond in the ways that students need them to when incidents occur, you know, it requires this kind of ongoing and in-depth training. This is not just the 30-minute, you know, asynchronous kind of compliance training, but really requires, you know, more substantive engagement with staff. So there's more in-depth training, as I mentioned, you know, for the liaison, the district Title IX Coordinator and investigator roles. So that's, you know, kind of training that we need to invest in to ensure that when, when a complaint does come in and moves to an investigation process, you know, it adheres to our goals around it being trauma-informed. The ongoing support and interaction with our student organizing groups, ensuring we have capacity to support them, and, you know, kind of coordinating, continuing to coordinate across, you know, this kind of community coalition that's established to support this work. And then ultimately, and this is really maybe the most, you know, I think the one for us to be most focused on, potentially moving forward in addition to the training, is, you know, all of the kind of best practices as we do the communication, do the notification, demonstrate that we can manage and engage students with effectively when they come forward with reports, that what that does is starts to open up the floodgates, as we've seen, you know, in various instances, for additional reports to come forward. So that's going to press our capacity to be able to manage those investigations in meaningful ways. So I think that's one of our biggest concerns moving forward. You know, currently, our district affirmative action officer, Title IX Coordinator is Richard Moore, who's our, also, who wears a few hats. You know, he's our Assistant Director of Human Resources and carries a significant body of work there. So one of our, you know, major concerns is being able to sustain in the ways we aspire to, you know, the investigative side of this, then having sufficient resources to manage these issues when they do crop up moving forward. So those are, you know, you know, some of the kind of implications around resources, a bit of the context of kind of what launched this work in collaboration, some of the overview of some pretty dense policy and procedure revisions, and kind of how we envision moving forward. So before I open it back up for you kind of board discussion and turn it back over to your chair, wanted to just see if Kim or Sasha or Krista had, you know, did I miss anything, anything pertinent to add about the work we've done together and kind of how that's represented in our policies and procedures at this point?
I'm happy to be available for, to answer questions, but Erin, I'm extremely impressed that you were able to be so clear with such complex material at 10:15 in the evening. So you, you did amazing.
Thank you, Kim.
This is Krista. I just want to say that I echo that, and I also really appreciate how this policy has sort of managed to stay at the forefront even with dealing with COVID. And I'm just really impressed at, at how much of a priority it's been. So I thank you all for the hard work.
Thanks, Krista.
I just wanted to express my appreciation for all of you guys who have been here since the beginning and folks who have joined in throughout this work. It's been almost a year since the original board meeting where I expressed a public comment, asking for you guys to, for your ear, for you to listen to the students. And you did. And we now have this really awesome comprehensive policy about a year later, and I'm really excited to continue working on the implementation process. Thank you, guys.
And Clara, I've had you join us on, you know, to see if anything you wanted to share.
Yeah, thank you. You know, similarly, thank you to everyone who's spent a tremendous amount of time on this really, really important process. And just speaking from the experience of implementing a change like this at USM between 2010, 2013, and it took that long, but what we saw there, to your last point, Erin, was yes, once faculty and staff had been trained in how to identify and how to respond, and then students had been trained in what, also what to look for and how to seek help, there was an incredible surge in reporting. But I think the, the natural arc, if you really keep the training up and you keep the awareness building going, is that reports will begin, we hope, to decline over time because culture change will be achieved. So they won't go away, and they will, the surge is because we haven't had something like this before. But the hope, of course, is that we'll make some real lasting change that will bring the reports down.
Thank you, Clara. And thank you, yeah, thank you all for your continued support. I think with that, Chair, that wraps up our presentation for the workshop.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Victor to, as Policy Chair, to, to manage the conversation and discussion moving forward. I just want to acknowledge, since Sasha mentioned, it was a year ago when she came up to the board, I, that actually, that meeting in that moment has been, I've been reflecting a lot on that moment, particularly, you know, as, as we pay attention to, to listening to our students and, and, and acting in response to, to their concerns. So I'm just really proud of where we are today and, and all the work that's gone on. And, and again, that it was something that was initially catapulted by, by one of our students, very passionate and, and serious interest in, in us doing this. So just immensely proud of that. So I'll hand it over to Ms. Victor so she can manage the rest of the discussion, as she's been key to this work so far. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. I will be really brief, but I do want to get my own thanks in as well. Leading with thinking Sasha, Sasha, you, you were so persistent in, in addressing the board, individual board members, starting with doing your research, and you never give up, and that's why we're here today with a policy that I am so proud of. The, this, when we started this process, we said we wanted to, we wanted to write a policy that really was visionary in what we're trying to achieve as a school district, and we achieved that. So I want to thank you Sasha and also Kim and everyone who's involved, but Kim was just instrumental in getting, in educating all of us and really getting into the weeds and doing so much of the heavy lifting in the actual work it took to rewrite and overhaul our policy and procedures. And then to Erin, who's shepherded this, all of this through in the midst of the pandemic. It has not been easy, and he's kept his eye on moving the process forward, and I'm so grateful for all of your leadership. And then just to say to the board that this is very complex, and the overview that Erin gave was admirable. I think it is excellent, Erin. If you have questions before our next board meeting, when we're going to vote on the policy, please let me know, let Erin know, we can answer your questions, connect you with others like Kim, to help answer your questions, help ensure that you understand the policy changes and the reason behind them. So with that, I see that, that Ms. Morioni has her hand up. So let's start with you, Ms. Morioni.
Thank you. Yeah, Emily, basically all my notes here, you said it perfectly. I just want to, I was just reflecting back, Sasha, the first time you asked to meet, I looked back on my phone, it was May of 2018, and we met at Black Cat Coffee when it was named that, before it just changed to Rwanda Bean. And we sat there and you brought your whole packet of material from your capstone project that you've been working on for months and months and months. And I just, just need to take another moment and say how grateful, how wonderful it is that you, that your tenacity, your, your courage, just to put yourself out there, but most importantly, put yourself out there with your, your colleagues, your classmates, daring to just say, you know what, I got to dig deeper into this, I want to do a survey, I want to talk to people, I want to talk to staff, I want to talk to principals, then I want to talk to the middle school principals, then I want to do another survey. You went on and, and the work that you've put and the grounding us in this. And, and I then want to say a huge, huge shout-out and thanks to all the subcommittee members. Thank you so much to Assistant Superintendent Townsend. This work, again, over two years now, and it was the spark of Sasha Van Eaton. Thank you so much, Sasha. And I apologize that I handed off the baton, I didn't stay so present with the subcommittee and, and the policy work, but I knew it was in good hands, and now I'm just thrilled to see this come to such a powerful policy and, and I'm, I'm just thrilled. So thank you very much, I'm very grateful. And again, I think it, it underlines, as the superintendent said, it underlines, it grounds us in so much of our work, but also it's the safety of our students first and foremost. I mean, this policy, without, without recognizing the importance of this and the safety and having our students, when they need, need someone who, a caring adult to reach out to in difficult times, we are making sure that they have someone they can go to, is, is critical. So again, thank you so much to all of you and particularly Sasha. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Morioni. Next, we have Ms. Bando.
Thank you, Ms. Victor, and I just want to emphasize what you just said, because this is emotional, because this is a, really the voice of the voiceless. And I think this is the time we've been awaiting to different aspects of the culture and different communities to come with this, because the marginalized student and family and community, they've been silent for years because they didn't have a strong policy, who'd been be able to give them that platform where they can come forward and speak out. And our student, because they didn't have a good prevention education, are wrong, are to recognize those are signs of discrimination or harassment or sexual harassment, so they can come and identify themselves and have a, a place when they can go and get some trauma in form and get some social emotion and guiding to that direction. So this is just speaks for everything. And I'm so, just want to be thankful and grateful for the team who were able to make it possible, Sasha for standing for what she believed, and we need to change to those reform. And then Kim, Clara, and all the district, because this is just the beginning of some other change, because we have to give those a student, the voice they've been missing. We need to be able to give those families, those a voice to stand and advocate for their right and, and for the student and for the, the fairness of justice for all discrimination and harassment and sexual, and sexual harassment, and most of marginalized students, they've been faced for years, and no one being so courageous and be taking the risk or be bold enough to bring forward and to build a policy. I just salute you, the, the, the policy team to be able to build amazing work frame, then we can be proud of that. The only thing I just want to make sure, when we, when I write the final proposal here on the three and four, when we talk about the, the limited English proficiency, we need to make sure then those translations or some of those documents on the different languages. So student who have that so limited, they can be able to recognize those signs of discrimination or harassment, so they can have a time to go and define it and speak about it and get some support. Thank you. From the bottom of my heart, this is amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bando. Mr. Burke.
Yeah, thank you. I'll say simply, I hold that same gratitude for all the work that's gone into this. I have one provocation, one question, I guess. One, the provocation is, can we get that person who did the graphic design work back over the summer on the opening plans to help put this kind of content into that level of easy-to-intake materials? Because for this, to move from, Erin, you did a beautiful job, and we got to go further to make it easy to pick up for folks. So I know that's part of the work ahead, that's me being a little punchy. But here's my question. I, I understand how this operates, and this is a question for either Chair, Chair of the Committee, Chair of the Board. But when I think about our own body as, as the Board, and I think about acts that I've seen, including a white member of this Board trying to silence a black member of our community, a former student, and I wonder how this applies to, to us. a former student, and I wonder how this applies to, to us? Is this a policy that applies to us, or do we have other policies that govern our, our behavior?
Is that a question for any of us to take a stab at?
For either Emily or you, Chair Rodriguez, I believe it's.
Okay, I mean, I can give some, some entry-level answer to that. You know, as you recall, Adam, when, as part of the onboarding, there's a, there's a code of conduct that, that the Board abides by, and then of course, there's Board policy that we abide by. I leave it up to the Superintendent to discuss how district policy applies to Board members. So, yeah, I just wanted to point out those, those few things that do directly apply to how Board members are supposed to conduct themselves and what expectations we have.
But this policy broadly would apply in the case of Board members dealing with students, which is somewhat different from the instance that you described. Mr. Burke, the Board does have a, a code of conduct and a code of ethics. I don't remember off the top of my head exactly what it says on this issue, but, you know, generally, there are, you know, and if you sort of harken to Mr. Townsend's presentation, the, the graphic that showed the sort of Title IX and then state, state laws and then district policies, that within the state laws, there are some, there are some provisions that, you know, that, that protect different groups from discriminatory practices. So, but I'm not 100% sure what in our, I have to review them, what in the Board's policy speaks directly to that particular instance.
Yeah. Mr. Burke, did you have additional questions?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that one of the attendees has her hand up, and just wanted to reiterate that we don't have public comment during a workshop. We had public comment at the end of our meeting for non-agenda items and during our meeting for items on the agenda. So there won't be additional public comment during this workshop. So with that, are there any other questions from, from the Board? I see the Chair has his.
Just, just to follow up on that, that, you know, when this policy is on the agenda next, next meeting for the Board, there will be an opportunity for public comment specific to it, so just to let folks that are attend, that are in the attendees list today know that at our next meeting, October eight, is it 18th?
20th.
20th, excuse me. Again, there'll be public, an opportunity for public comment on this policy.
Thank you, Chair. It's a very helpful clarification. Okay, if there aren't any other questions from the Board, Assistant Superintendent Townsend, any closing remarks or next steps prior to our considering this policy next, at our next meeting?
No, I mean, we're moving forward, you know, preparing for implementation, but if there are questions about the procedure in any way, please let us know. I mean, again, I think framing, you know, we have the policy up for adoption, we have this, and that'll be what folks will be voting on next time. You know, the procedure, given its complexity and kind of given the Board rules around kind of the authority, you know, the procedure is not, you know, kind of a voted-on item. And we anticipate, you know, as we move forward, you know, in this first year of implementation, as we move forward with the annual report, that, you know, given its complexity, we may find adjustments need to be made, and that, you know, that this is not a static piece and shouldn't be as we learn how to do this work well. So just, you know, want to acknowledge that, and kind of the voting item next time will be the policy, but happy to answer any questions about either the policy or procedure between now and then.
Terrific, thank you so much. Unless there's anything else, I think that concludes our workshop. All right? Good night, everyone.